I want to remind my colleagues that decorum is to be respected at all times. Insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the chair and members shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola.
Here.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Botcher.
Here.
Brannon. Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Caban.
Present.
Carr.
Here.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Present.
Felice. Gennaro. Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Marmarado.
Present.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya. Narcisse.
Here.
Nurse.
Here.
Osay.
Present.
Palladino.
Here.
Powers. Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez. Shulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Vernikoff.
Here.
Williams.
Present.
One.
Present.
Jaeger.
Here.
Zhuang. Sanchez. Thank you. Borelli.
Present.
Zhuang.
Zhuang.
Thank you. Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
I feel like I need to be running in the door. I'm present, present. Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Dr. Richard Griffiths, Lead Pastor of Bronx Bethany Church of the Nazarene, which is located at 971 East 227th Street in the Bronx.
Good afternoon. It's a privilege to be a part of this convening today and open this time of critical dialogue and legislation with an invocation of prayer. Thank you to Speaker Adams, Majority Leader Farias, and my councilman from the Bronx, Honorable Kevin Riley, for this invitation. Would you please bow your heads as we look to the Lord in prayer? Let us pray. Lord Jesus, your word says to pray in the Spirit on all occasions with all kinds of prayers and requests, and to be alert, always praying for the Lord's people. And this living God is an occasion to seek you. Thank you, Lord God, for the miracle of today in breathing the breath of life into council members who are here today as representatives and advocates chosen by your people and allowed by you. Thank you for their commitments to and passion for your beloved people. We thank you for the residents of this city, its richness and its diversity. Help us to see the beauty of difference in how you've called your people to unity amidst our diversity. Lord, we pray that the matters at hand today would transcend partisanship and emphasize humanity, that hearts would be filled with unity and marked by postures of collaboration and peace, true shalom that comes from you and is accessible to us. This chamber wrestles with the complexities of the human condition. Grant this council your wisdom, which you have promised to give generously to anyone who asks of you without finding fault. When asked of you, give them your acumen to listen and to discern both the immediate and long-term effects of each issue and decision. Give this assembly the courage to be compassionate. We pray that justice and mercy and compassion would be the priorities that would saturate this convening and each discussion. Lord, we pray that your kingdom, the kingdom of God, would be their benchmark. We pray for humility and patience and also decisiveness for those things that are both urgent and important. Help your people today who carry heavy loads and great responsibilities. Today I come against apathy and indifference, but I pray for true servant hearts, hearts that are more interested in caring than being correct. Lord, we remember those who are often forgotten, the widow, the immigrant, the fatherless, the impoverished, and the imprisoned, many of whom are exploited and are experiencing poor and inhumane living conditions. Cause this council to plead their cases and to act to transform their realities. I bring before you each representative, their support staff, and their families, and pray that you would bless them and overshadow them with your presence and love. Lord, we look to you for their covering and protection. Now to the King eternal, immortal, invisible, the only God, be glory and honor forever and ever. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. I would now ask Councilmember Kevin Riley to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I want to begin by thanking Reverend Dr. Richard Griffiths for his powerful and heartfelt invocation. His prayer reminds us of the profound responsibility we carry in this chamber and the faith that guides so many of us in serving our community. As the Lead Pastor of the Bronx Bethany Church of the Nazarene, Dr. Griffiths is a true advocate for the people of the Northeast Bronx. His church has been a sanctuary for community dialogue, opened up the door to host one of my office's monthly community conversations, and provide critical resources for our residents. Through his compassion and dedication, Dr. Griffiths, what we like to call Reverie Ritchie, exemplifies faith in action, whether mentoring youth, addressing the congregation, or strengthening our neighbors. His call today for unity, equity, and humility reminds us that our work is not just about policies, but about the people. The New Yorkers, we are privileged to serve every day. Thank you, Majority Leader. I would like to thank Reverend, excuse me, Reverend Dr. Richard Griffiths for being here today, and I make a motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation in full upon today's record. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have the adoption of minutes by Councilmember Crystal Hudson.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of November 13th, 2024, and November 21st, 2024 be adopted as printed.
Thank you. Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
M-80, Comptroller's Report.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
M-81, Commissioner of Elections Recommendation.
Rules, privileges, and elections. Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
None.
Thank you. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. Today, the council will vote on the Department of City Planning's Zoning for Housing Opportunities Citywide Text Amendment with modifications estimated to create over 82,000 new homes over 15 years as part of an agreement to invest $5 billion into the Council's City for All Housing Plan. This represents a major step forward for the city to confront our housing crisis. This council has consistently shown the importance of it playing a constructive role in advancing housing solutions across this city. We recognize the severity of the decades-in-the-making housing crisis, the impact it's having on working and middle-class New Yorkers, and the urgency required of us to advance bold solutions that match the scale of this challenge. Since 2022, we have approved the development of more than 27,000 units of affordable housing through the land use process, with more than half being affordable homes. This includes major projects like Innovation Queens that many doubted our ability to chart a successful path forward to advance at all. Today is another step forward by this council to advance meaningful housing solutions that lower costs to make our city affordable and ensure housing as a stabilizing force. Throughout the public review process for DCP's Citywide Zoning Text Amendment proposal, we heard the voices of residents across the city, including those who are concerned about what it could mean for their neighborhoods. Our modifications to the zoning reforms balance respect for neighborhood character because not all districts are alike. With the citywide need to build more housing, especially affordable homes, our modifications prioritized creating the greatest number of homes while maintaining the fair housing principle that every neighborhood contributes in a plan that could be approved. This council has led efforts to make housing more affordable, especially at the deepest levels needed by most New Yorkers. We have championed the importance of homeownership through support for existing homeowners and the expansion of opportunities to own a home for more working-class New Yorkers to stay in our city. We are proud of what we were able to secure through the Council's City for All Housing Plan in conjunction with modifications to the Citywide Zoning Text Amendment. City for All was formulated with the input of council members, advocates, and, most importantly, New Yorkers who made their housing concerns and challenges abundantly clear to us. While we recognize the importance of zoning reform to build more housing, especially amidst a housing shortage, we knew more was needed to keep New Yorkers housed and address growing housing insecurity. We successfully secured a historic $5 billion commitment towards key investments, and with this funding, we will make homes more affordable and preserve existing affordable housing, including NICA and Mitchell Lamas, support homeownership, protect tenants, strengthen our city's housing agencies, invest in the sewer, street, and open space infrastructure of communities, and encourage neighborhood rezoning plans that can produce more housing in the coming years. This is the type of comprehensive housing plan and level of investment that New Yorkers require to address their wide-ranging housing needs. And yet we know there is so much more to do. Advancing solutions to difficult problems isn't easy, but it can be done when we unite behind the common goal to focus on what is best for New Yorkers and the future of our communities and the city that we all love. I thank Chair Salamanca and Riley for their leadership and our Housing Chair Sanchez and other members who supported this major effort. I thank Department of City Planning Director Garodnik and his staff, as well as the City Hall Housing Staff who partnered so closely with me, my office, and the entire council to negotiate this agreement. The contribution of $1 billion from the state by Governor Hokel was also very critical. And of course, I thank the many, many New Yorkers who made their voices heard regarding their housing challenges. This is who we do this work for. On December 1st, a fire blazed through an apartment building in Councilmember Menon's district. One person was killed and six firefighters were injured. Our hearts are with the victims' family and loved ones as they grieve this horrible tragedy. My thoughts and prayers go out to the family, friends, and community of Sveek Kogan, a Habad rabbi who was killed on November 24th in the United Arab Emirates. His death was felt right here in New York City, as many of his loved ones and family members reside in Crown Heights, as well as in the Habad communities across the city and around the world. May his memory be a blessing. November 30th was Barbados National Day, which celebrates the country's independence from Britain after over 360 years as a British colony. The Bayesian community has contributed so much life and culture to New York City, and I wish Beijans across our city a wonderful day of celebration. We observed World AIDS Day on December 1st. This day is an opportunity for us to reaffirm our steadfast commitment to people living with HIV and AIDS and remember those we have lost to AIDS-related illnesses. Established in 1988, World AIDS Day served as an important reminder about the importance of our united mission to eradicate HIV and AIDS. December 2nd was Special Education Day, which commemorates the signing of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act into law in 1975. It is critical that we provide students with disabilities with the effective and sustained services they need to succeed. Additionally, December 3rd was International Day of Persons with Disabilities, a day to honor our disability community and advocate for further accessibility. Approximately 1 in 4 people in New York have a disability. To access our full potential as a society, it is imperative that we push for increased accessibility and prioritize inclusion so that people with disabilities can participate fully in our society and lead independent lives with dignity and respect. On Tuesday, December 10th, the council will host our annual Hanukkah celebration right here in the chambers, and we invite all New Yorkers to attend. Now let's move into our stated agenda. First, as I mentioned, we'll vote on the following land use items: City of Yes Zoning for Housing Opportunity, a citywide zoning text amendment to modify residential height, density, parking requirements, affordability, urban design, and other aspects of zoning regulations with the goal of increasing housing development across all neighborhoods. In response to robust community engagement, the council is modifying the proposal in three primary ways. First, to make new housing development more contextual with existing neighborhoods, particularly for blocks of small homes. Second, to increase the amount of affordable housing that will be created and make sure it reaches lower incomes. And third, to protect existing homeowners and tenants. Specifically, the council is reducing applicability of ADUs, particularly in flood-prone areas, and restricting ADUs to homes that are owner-occupied. The council is limiting transit-oriented development in certain areas with small homes and different transportation needs. Additionally, the council is protecting open spaces, on-campus developments, and preserving rear yards of row houses and semi-detached houses. The council is also introducing a parking scheme which is responsive to the different needs of communities while prioritizing housing development. It eliminates parking mandates where residents have short commutes, reduces them where commute times are longer or cross-neighborhood commuting is a challenge, and preserves requirements where residents have few public transit options and parking is likely to be provided by housing developers at that level anyway. And important, an important and historic modification by the council creates affordable housing incentives in low-density areas, bringing inclusionary zoning citywide for the first time in New York City. This will ensure that the creation of affordable housing is possible in every part of the city, and we thank our staff members, particularly Paris Strater, Anne McCoy, Brian Paul, William Vidal, Chelsea Kelly, Deborah Kurtzer, Arthur Ha, Ryan Coet, Caroline Antonelli, Dana Leventhal, and the entire Planning and Land Use Division. We'll also vote on the following finance items: A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon authorizing a 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for the preservation of one rental building in Councilmember Dinowitz's district; a pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon authorizing a two-and-a-half-year Article 5 tax exemption for the preservation of two rental buildings in Councilmember Salam's district; a pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brannon authorizing a 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for the preservation of two rental buildings also in Councilmember Salam's district; and a transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. Next, we will vote on the mayor's appointment of Muriel Good Truffant to the position of Corporation Counsel. Today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. The first two bills are part of Aging Committee Chair Crystal Hudson's Agent Place 2.0 Legislative Package. Introduction 1022A, sponsored by Councilmembers Jennifer Gutierrez and Crystal Hudson, would require the Commissioner of the Department for the Aging to Communities, or N-NORCS, in New York City. The study would identify potential NORCS and N-NORCS, assess the needs of older adults, evaluate necessary improvements, and collect data on demographic trends and health outcomes. Introduction 1054A, sponsored by Chair Hudson, would require the Aging in Place Plan that would focus on assisting older adults with aging in place throughout New York City. We thank our staff members Christopher Pepe, Chloe Rivera, and John LaRosa. Next, we will vote on two bills sponsored by Councilmember Jim Gennaro, Chair of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Resiliency, and Waterfronts, that will address sewer, flooding, and other infrastructure concerns. Introduction 814A would require the Department of Environmental Protection, or DEP, to update the sewer backup prevention plan by 2025 and conduct regular updates thereafter. The bill would also require DEP to provide timely notice to residents and complainants when it determines that certain sewer backups have occurred. We thank our staff members Brad Reed, Andrew Born, Ricky Chala, and Austin Malone. Introduction 815A would require DEP in consultation with the Department of Buildings and the Office of Long-Term Planning and Sustainability to create and regularly update an interim flood risk area map, identifying areas at risk of flooding due to 10-year rainfall events and sea level rise, as well as coastal flood areas with a 1% or greater chance of flooding in any year. Thank you to our staff members Brad Reed, Nick Witzowski, Andrew Born, Ricky Chala, and Austin Malone. Introduction 850A, sponsored by Councilmember Rafael Salamanca, would require the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, or HPD, to submit biannual reports to the council regarding city-financed affordable housing development projects involving the disposition of city property. Thank you to our staff members Elliot Heisler, Austin Malone, Jose Conde, Andrew Born, Dick Spencer, and C.J. Murray. The following bills are all sponsored by Councilmember Pirina Sanchez, Chair of the Committee on Housing and Buildings. They are critical bills that will complement the passage of the Modified Zoning for Housing Opportunities Citywide Text Amendment. Introduction 654A would implement a renewed version of the J-51 Tax Abatement Program for rehabilitation and renovation projects of certain multiple-dwelling buildings as authorized by the state. Thank you to our staff members Taylor, Zelanie, Mark Chen, and Audrey San. Introduction 1127A would establish a basement and cellar-dwelling unit legalization program in certain community districts. The program would include an application process for building owners to receive authorization for temporary residence for units, inspection by the Department of Buildings of such units, and provision of technical assistance and outreach by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development. Thank you very much to our staff members Austin Malone, Andrew Born, Jose Conde, Dirk Spencer, and Brad Reed. And Introduction 1128A would allow for the construction of ancillary dwelling units and establish eligibility and design requirements in one or two-family dwellings. Requirements would include ADUs to have separate utilities and entrances from primary dwellings to meet standards for light, ventilation, and emergency access to units, and to include means of fire prevention. Finally, this bill would prohibit basement and cellar ADUs in flood hazard areas. Thank you to our staff members Austin Malone, Andrew Born, Jose Conde, Dirk Spencer, and Brad Reed. Thank you very much for your attention. I now turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Salamanca, followed by Riley Lynn Sanchez.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Housing is the most important pillar to the health of our communities and the city. Yet the severe shortage of our homes across the five boroughs, especially one that are most affordable, is leaving working and middle-class New Yorkers in an impossible struggle to secure housing. In an increasingly unaffordable city, New Yorkers are spending more than their paychecks on housing than they can afford. The historic 1.4% housing vacancy rate is a sounding alarm, which makes clear that we must significantly build more housing. Reforming our city's neighborhood investments presents a major opportunity to make our city more affordable for every New Yorker. Holistically, we know that not one council district alone can build its way out of a housing crisis. It takes a true action plan that includes every district's participation in confronting this issue. The council can advance an important step towards this goal by approving our modifications to the Housing Opportunities Citywide Zoning Text Amendment, which is expected to build more than 80,000 new homes over the next 15 years. This reform plan maintains a core principle that for equitable development, every part of the city must create new housing. At the same time, we fully understand that neighborhoods across our city have distinct characteristics with diverse needs that must be respected. That is why modifications account for differences across neighborhoods and establish stronger requirements for more deeply affordable housing to match the greater need amongst New Yorkers. The council also recognizes that our communities have significant housing and infrastructure needs that cannot be met solely by producing more housing through zoning changes. That is why the council fought to secure historic $5 billion in investments to help address these many other needs through our City for All Housing Plan. For the residents of NICA, Mitchell Lama, and other existing affordable housing developments, we secured $2 billion to preserve and create more of these homes. Throughout the public review process, many residents and their council members highlighted the lack of sufficient infrastructure in their neighborhoods, which led to flooding, battered roads, and lack of open space. To address these vulnerabilities, the council secured $2 billion to a strengthening communities' infrastructure. The funding commitments we secured for the City of All also include reinforcements for tenant protections that can help prevent displacement, housing assistance to combat homelessness, and support for housing agencies to help New Yorkers access housing, advance the development of affordable homes, and inspect buildings to ensure safety. Ensuring housing and housing security for our constituents and all residents is fundamental to a thriving city. New Yorkers need stable, affordable homes, and the council is moving to address this crisis through a comprehensive plan that pairs investments and housing solutions together with zoning reforms. I am confident that this thoughtful, carefully negotiated agreement, though with diverse community concerns in mind, is the right step for our city. Now is the time for action and our shared contributions to solve our housing crisis and what will ensure that New Yorkers today and tomorrow can succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Riley, followed by Sanchez and Brewer.
Thank you, Majority Leader. As the Chair of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises, I am honored to cast my vote today in favor of the City of Yes Zoning for Housing Opportunity, a transformative step forward in addressing New York City's housing crisis. This plan is more about numbers. Although they anticipate 82,000 new homes and $5 billion, its critical investment are monumental. It's about providing hope and opportunity for New Yorkers, who have been struggling to find stable, affordable places to live. It's about uplifting families who deserve, not just housing, but homes in neighborhoods that welcome them, support them, and allow them to thrive. This initiative is a key pillar of our City for All Plan, which reflects the council's unwavering commitment to advocacy and collaboration. Every borough is part of this effort, ensuring that solutions are shared equitable and tailored to the unique character of our communities. We are making a promise today, no matter where you live in this city, we are working to build a future where affordability is no longer out of reach, and every New Yorker has a place to call their home. I want to thank Speaker Adams, the Department of City Planning, my council colleagues, especially the land use team, and the tireless advocates who helped shape this proposal. This vote represents not just a comprehensive plan, but proves that by working together we can build a city that supports its neighbors, invest in its people, and creates a legacy of inclusion and equity for generations to come. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Majority Leader. We are in the throes of a housing crisis, an affordability crisis, with a near-zero citywide vacancy rate for the most affordable housing. If you lose your affordable home today, you will not find another tomorrow. That is why our vote today, colleagues, to overhaul the city's zoning code to enable the creation of a little more housing in every neighborhood, paired with $5 billion in investments that our Speaker negotiated on this council's behalf, is so important. Our actions here today will aid tens of thousands of New Yorkers. Colleagues, I urge you to think big picture as you cast your votes today. A no vote is no to $5 billion for more deeply affordable housing, housing vouchers stabilizing over 20,000 families, expanded homeownership opportunities, stabilization of Mitchell Lamas infrastructure, neighborhood planning, all secured Lamas infrastructure, neighborhood planning, all secured by our Speaker. A no vote is no to 80,000 more homes in the next 10 years. This isn't about any one of us as individuals or even our own political calculus. It isn't it isn't even about the community that we might represent. A yes New Yorkers. I want to thank all of our advocates to our Speaker for your extraordinary leadership in getting us to this point, and to all the staff who worked to get City of Yes and City for All to the point it is today. Colleagues, let's do the right thing, and I will mention that I have three bills that are also companion bills to City of Yes, 1127 and 28 make accessory dwelling units safer for all, and 654 reestablishes J-51, the J-51 tax incentives, which will save 166,000 families living in our co-ops and condos across the city, thousands of dollars each year so they can green their homes. Thank you so much, Majority Leader.
Recognizing Councilmember Brewer, followed by Gennaro Lynn Banks.
Thank you very much. This particular City of Yes doesn't impact a huge amount, rarely really developed areas like the Upper West Side, but what it does is, it brings, as you heard earlier, housing to all different communities and makes a difference. When different people are mixing in communities, it makes our city a much stronger place. So, it's about the people. When you get a department and it's part of a community and you're different, that is a positive in my world. Number two, I'm really concerned about preservation, and this City of Yes, plus the funding, does address preservation. I can tell you that I've got about three large buildings right now, single-room occupancies to be purchased, but they need to be part of the discussion. Number three is, I feel strongly that these regulations should not stymie the continuation of the work that the Landmarks Preservation Commission does in the future. We should keep that in mind. I want to mention that just the other day, I released the fact that on the Upper West Side, in like a 20 or 30-block area, the bad news is that there were 630 brand-new, very expensive units, and only 68 of them were affordable, and they were in two buildings. Everybody else was market, and it could have been different if City of Yes existed. I want to congratulate everyone for the work they've done, the staff, Speaker, City Planning, and the council. And I just want to mention, a big idea, I keep mentioning, Wars Island is the last piece of open land in Manhattan. I'd love to see an affordable co-op and rental program there of Mitchell Llama. Thank you very much.
Recognizing Councilmember Gennaro, followed by Banks, then Ariola.
Thank you.
I vote yes.
We haven't gone to votes yet, but we'll get to it. Quiet, please. Recognizing Councilmember Gennaro, followed by Banks, then Ariola.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I think the Speaker did a great job in talking about, I got, I got two bills, 814A about sewer backups, I think that, I think the Speaker covered that very well. I want to keep my remarks brief, it's a long meeting. 815A about the flooding maps, just a little more detail, there are two separate maps. One is, you know, coastal flood map, and we know all about the need for that from Sandy, and also so-called inland flood hazard area maps. Those are critical for the very intense rainstorms that we get now. So, it's two separate mapping initiatives that will provide great benefit, particularly with the inland flood areas, because heavy rains, this is, this is what is happening. It will help inform, you know, DEP Storm Water Management Planning, and also, you know, critical to today, it will, it will be, the inland flood mapping maps and the information that it provides will be a very important resource for mapping the appropriate and safe placement of ADUs. So, there are many applications to these, to these maps, and together, these bills represent a proactive approach in dealing with the growing impacts on climate change and severe storms in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Banks, followed by Ariola.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. It's not just, it's not enough just to say that New York City is in a housing crisis. The real crisis is regarding the lack of affordability and the pathways to homeownership. My district has seen an increase in affordable housing over the last 15 years, but it still remains nearly impossible for my constituents to become homeowners. Homeownership is the cornerstone of stability, community building, social engagement, and fostering economic growth in our community. Unfortunately, the City of Yes plan does little to ensure the future of housing will be affordable, and offers no meaningful solution to improve homeownership. Most importantly, my vote today reflects the wishes of my constituents. Time and time again, I hear from my constituents that they need more parking. While I appreciate the efforts made during the negotiations to protect parking requirements, I must echo the concerns of my constituents that the increased development will further strain already limited parking. City of Yes lacks the nuance to avoid harm in my district, which, despite being home to multiple subway lines, it is also filled with transportation deserts, making cars necessary. All four community boards in my district disapproved of this proposal. The people I represent and serve have said, made it clear in their opposition. My constituents fear the proposal would irrevocably change the character of their neighborhoods, opening the floodgate, floodgates for developers to build and construct with no concern for their interests, and destroy generations and families that will be uprooted, and the years of rich history that will be erased. Voters sent me to City Hall to listen to them, and I'm listening to them.
Thank you. Quiet on the floor, please. Okay. Councilmember Ariola, followed by Councilmember Williams, then Carr.
Thank you. In Queens County, 12 out of 14 community boards voted against the City of Yes. So, a no vote is not against housing, affordable housing, affordable housing for all. It is a no against long-term consequences for the people of this city. It is a no against virtually unchecked buildings and allowances for the renewal, and a no against community lack of input, as well as our lack of input, on massive developments in neighborhoods that we represent. It is a no because we don't need to push our infrastructure past the breaking point. It is a no against chaos. It is a no for districts like mine, who are flood-prone neighborhoods that already lack vital infrastructure. The City of Yes will only add to the heavy burdens residents face every day. Even in the worst-case scenario, it can create life-threatening situations during weather emergencies. But just on moon tides in my communities, we would be absolutely underwater. We don't have the infrastructure, and I know that the mayor has promised money for infrastructure, but why are we putting the cart before the horse? Why are we putting the housing up and then worrying about the infrastructure? We need to have the infrastructure in place before we build the housing. That's what's important. I appreciate the work that the Speaker's office and my colleagues did, and the Land Use Division. I appreciate the fact that modifications were made, but I can't go on a what-if when my constituents, like Councilmember Banks said, are telling me we don't trust the system. We don't want the character of our neighborhoods to change. We do want more affordability. So, I strongly urge my colleagues to support future legislation that I will be introducing, which would exempt flood zones and inland flooding areas from the City of Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Williams, followed by Carr.
Thank you. Today, we face a defining moment for our city, a moment to choose bold action to address a housing crisis that is squeezing families, stifling opportunity, and holding New Yorkers back. Let me start by saying this, I heard you. I heard the concerns about maintaining the character of our neighborhoods and balancing growth incrementally with fairness. That's why I've worked tirelessly with Speaker Adams, the admin, community leaders, and my colleagues to ensure that the City of Yes for Housing Opportunity is not just a policy, but a promise. This promise says we can tackle a housing crisis that has left us with a rental vacancy rate of just 1.41%, the lowest since 1968, and half of renters burdened by skyrocketing rents. But it also says we can do it responsibly, with our communities at the heart of every decision. Over the past month, I convened many focus groups in Southeast Queens to dig into the original proposal. Based on that feedback, we fought for and secured key amendments to protect the character of our neighborhoods. For example, parking requirements for larger buildings in lower-density districts of my council district will remain unchanged, because cars are a necessity in our transit desert. Accessory dwelling units have been scaled back, ensuring the detached ADUs don't overwhelm our communities, and any homeowner adding one must live on-site to maintain our homeownership culture. We even refined the scope of town-centered and transit-oriented development near low-density neighborhoods to avoid overburdening infrastructure near Long Island Railroad stations. These revisions matter. They show that the City of Yes doesn't mean yes at any cost, it means yes to thoughtful, balanced growth. And with the council securing $5 billion for housing-related investments and homeownership opportunities, including $2 billion for sewer infrastructure, public space, and other infrastructure improvements, this plan is not just about zoning changes, it's a comprehensive strategy to meet the needs of New Yorkers. The families of Southeast Queens and all of New York deserve thriving communities that aren't overburdened. Thank you so much to the Land Use Division for all your hard work.
Recognizing Councilmember Carr, followed by Yeager, then Feliz.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Colleagues, when I spoke at the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises a couple of weeks ago on City of Yes, I talked a lot about the fact that the public will of so many of our constituents was being ignored in City of Yes, that our infrastructure needs were already not being meant at current levels of development, and that we had an opportunity to do more housing the right way, that was respectful of neighborhood character. And having spoken about that and knowing that other colleagues are doing and will do the same here today, I want to focus a little bit on what I believe to have been the insufficient environmental review that this administration did with respect to City of Yes. At the hearing we held on October 21st, the administration testified in response to my questioning that this is a text amendment, not a mapping amendment, and the environmental review was done accordingly. But I believe that City of Yes is a mapping amendment, masquerading as a text amendment. It is a mapping action, and therefore, the environmental review was not done. City of Yes seeks to change minimum lot sizes across residential districts, especially in R1s. It's seeking to map transit-oriented development zones across our city without actually changing the underlying zoning. This is a mapping action in all but name, and that's why I believe that this text amendment, so-called, is incredibly vulnerable to legal action. And I believe that this environmental review did not even get to the, scrape the top of the iceberg of how many housing units it will actually create, far more than the 109,000-plus that it capped out at, according to the study. So, I believe that this text amendment will not survive a legal challenge, and one is likely to be forthcoming. And I just want to remind colleagues that we still have an opportunity to disapprove. The only thing that's off the table here today are new modifications. So, let's vote down City of Yes, and then one of us can put forward a motion to disapprove after we're successful, and I urge my colleagues to vote no. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Yeager, followed by Feliz, then Ayala.
Thank you, Madam President. Whenever this body does "one-size-fits-all" rules, we fail. Whatever the topic is, whether it's sanitation, whether it's zoning, this city is too large, too complicated, too complex, too diverse, too underdeveloped in some places, too overdeveloped in others, for us to do a one-size-fits-all plan for the top of the Bronx, the Bama Staten Island. Just can't be done. And it's irresponsible and lazy to tell New Yorkers that it can, and we do that frequently, not just on this topic, but on many topics, on planning roads, on planning bike lanes, planning sanitation. We do it all the time, and we really shouldn't. It is a big city, and we should treat it like that. A lot's been said here on this body and this floor today, and in the last couple of days and weeks, about this great gift of $5 billion, this phantom $5 billion in monopoly money that we've been granted. The city's budget, not $1 planned for in the state's budget. $5 billion, a promise, the promise that buy the burger today and gladly pay you next year Tuesday. There is not a single penny planned for. But we are guaranteeing that we will pass this. Can't get your vote back. Understand, colleagues, you cannot get your vote back. You vote for this, that $5 billion isn't there, magically becomes $2 billion. You don't get to come back here and say, "Give me my vote back." One-time chance to do it right. As Councilmember Carr said, we have a chance to vote this down, vote down the modifications, send it back to City Planning. We can do a plan that we can disapprove this one, vote for an actual plan that does this in a real way, and does it in conjunction with the city budget, so that we can actually achieve the monies that we think we're getting. And I urge colleagues, my colleagues, to do that. I also wish to associate myself with the remarks of Councilmember Banks. They are wise, and I appreciate them very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Recognizing Councilmember Feliz, followed by Deputy Speaker Ayala, then Councilmember Hudson.
Thank you, Majority Leader. For years and years and years, our city has been in a housing crisis, a housing crisis with real effect on New Yorkers, including cramped apartments, housing instability, and even worse, homelessness. We can only resolve this housing crisis by making it easy to build, removing obstacles that get in the way and prevent new homes from being built. And that's exactly what we are doing today. Building housing should not be challenging, shouldn't be difficult, but we must think about every highly restrictive and overly complicated rule that gets in the way of us getting out of this housing crisis. This City of Yes is a great start. It's not perfect, but it's a great start, and it goes a long way. I proudly represent District 15 in the Bronx, which has proudly built some of the largest amounts of affordable housing in the entire city, but as we all know, District 15 cannot resolve this housing crisis alone. So, encourage everybody to vote yes. I want to congratulate all of my colleagues, including Speaker Adams. As we all know, Speaker Adams is a tough, principled, and effective negotiator, so congratulations, Speaker Adams, and everybody else. Also, before I conclude, just want to emphasize how proud I am of the many homeownership opportunities included in this bill. When New Yorkers move up the economic ladder, they want to own their own home, and if New York City does not offer those opportunities, we're going to lose these New Yorkers to other nearby cities and states. We should want to keep these New Yorkers, and we need to invest in them, and that's exactly what we're doing today, including $41 million for down payment assistance programs, creation of new Mitchell Llama programs, and many other initiatives. So, very proud, and I'm strongly encouraging everybody to vote yes on the City of Yes.
Thank you. Recognizing Deputy Speaker Tanya Ayala.
Sorry, I broke the mic, sorry. Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to say a few words about my vote to approve the City of Yes for Housing Opportunity. Housing is a fundamental pillar of safety and stability for our city, and it's that I know personally, from my own experiences, of homelessness and housing insecurity. This plan was the result of listening to the needs of everyday New Yorkers, who are facing growing housing and economic pressures. We heard from working families and residents who are struggling to find a home, to afford rent or costs to maintain their homes, and in some cases, to live with the dignified conditions that we all deserve. As part of our negotiations, the council secured $5 billion in commitments for our City of All Housing Plan that will benefit our communities and entire city. New Yorkers are relying on us to deliver this investment. We cannot fail them. As councilmembers representing all corners of this diverse city, we see, hear, and feel the impact of this housing crisis. We know, whether it's from our constituents or even our own family members, how hard it is now for New Yorkers to make ends meet. Too many of the hundreds of thousands of residents living in Natcha developments do not have their apartments maintained at the level of quality, quality that they deserve to be safe. Many New Yorkers are unhoused or in the brink of homelessness and need better access to City FEP's housing vouchers that can help them gain stability. That is why the council pushed for a comprehensive housing plan to help alleviate many of the challenges that the zoning cannot address now. Working alongside New Yorkers, we put forward a plan to deliver greater housing security, deeper affordability, and the neighborhood investments needed. I am especially proud that our City for All Plan prioritizes funding to support our public housing residents. We were able to secure $2 billion in additional capital investments that support repairs of Natcha tenant apartments and makes the 5,000 vacant public apartments of NICA tenant apartments and makes the 5,000 vacant public apartments available to New Yorkers. The funding will also support increased affordable housing development and preservation of privately-managed apartment buildings, including Mitchell-Lamas and HDFCs.
Deputy Speaker, your time has expired.
I am also, I'm going to take a point of privilege as Deputy Speaker to finish my remarks. I am also excited that we will deliver-
We can come around a second round if you'd like, but please wrap them, Deputy Speaker. We appreciate it.
I would ask again for a point of privilege, which I never request, because I never give remarks. But I'm also excited, and I'm wrapping up, I'm also excited that we will deliver the $400 million in funding for CityFEP's vouchers, including for use in buildings converted from homeless shelters to permanently affordable housings. We cannot forget the $2 billion infrastructure investments that we were able to secure, which will go towards unnecessary improvements for flood mitigation of our stormwater drainage and sewer systems, street upgrades, and open spaces. All of these investments will have tangible lasting impact on our communities and New Yorkers, and we cannot afford to throw away this generational opportunity. With the City of All Housing Plan, we are all investing in the people of our city. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Hudson, followed by Ose, and then Hanks.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and good afternoon, all. Today's vote on the City of Yes zoning for housing opportunity is certainly a controversial one, but the reality is that some communities are doing their part to address the housing crisis, and others are not, and that's the real controversy. While every neighborhood and district is different, we can't keep relying on the South Bronx, Western Queens, or Northern and Central Brooklyn alone to build us out of this crisis. We need everyone to do their part. This first-of-its-kind citywide text amendment does the bare minimum in creating more opportunities to build housing, including the deeply affordable housing this body so passionately cares about. It gives communities and developers alike new options to consider when planning a new project. And let me be clear, these options are just that, options. Nothing considered in this zoning text amendment requires developers or homeowners to build anything, but with City of Yes, we create an option for more affordable housing units via Universal Affordability Preference, or UAP, an option to remove unnecessary and costly parking mandates that could create a financially feasible pathway to increase affordability beyond MIH, and an option to build ADUs that can provide older family members the opportunity to age in place. In my experience, the people who've complained most about housing proposals are those who have housing. If we don't maximize our opportunities to build, rents will only continue to rise and push out longtime community residents, especially older black and brown New Yorkers who live on fixed incomes. I'd like to commend the Speaker, her staff, and especially the Planning and Land Use Division for securing $5 billion for more deeply affordable housing and homeownership opportunities, infrastructure investments, and tenant protections. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Ose, followed by Hanks.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I wasn't going to speak today, but, you know, I've been hearing a lot of statements from some people, not all people, about their opposition to this. It's wild to hear those same people who are pushing back against the development of new homes are the same people who aren't even against rent stabilization, good cause eviction, banning forced broker fees, and a plethora of other initiatives that keep affordability or protect affordability here in this city. Let's talk about the facts. Over the past 40 years, the city has added more jobs than we have homes. The vacancy rate, as we've heard today, is at 1.4 percent. I represent Bed-Stuy, where I saw the largest displacement of black people and influx of new residents compared to every other community within the city. When people are moving into our city to apply and work in those new jobs that we've added, they're competing for the same homes of working-class New Yorkers, of workers who are working for New York City, which adds to the skyrocketing in our rents. What we're doing here today is not easy, but it's necessary. We need to build in this city, we need to build affordability in this city, we need rent stabilization in this city, we need so much more to protect the working-class New Yorkers that exist within the five boroughs. Every single community needs to do their part, and the Speaker's assistance here in pushing a City for All Plan and adding $5 billion, that's a lot of money, to go towards affordable housing development, to go towards infrastructure development is a necessary step, not the end-all be-all, but a necessary step in putting us where we need to be and making the city affordable. We cannot, as a body and government, sit idle and let the city become more and more unaffordable because of those who have continued to say no for decades.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Hanks, followed by Russler.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'd like to associate my comments with my colleague, Councilmember Banks. The City of Yes for housing opportunities set out to be a solution for our city's housing and zoning changes. However, it falls short of achieving its stated goals in boroughs like Staten Island as it fails to adequately address the unique needs of boroughs like my own. So if you ask me to come up with a plan that provides 5,000-plus units of housing, which includes over 30 percent of affordable units, I can provide that to you. It's not a matter of not doing our part. It's in this housing crisis. It's about doing our part with respect of our districts and our individual needs. And so, you know, our borough's unique infrastructure, flood-zone-prone areas, limited public transportation, a lot of this plan just doesn't go far enough. And I want to express my gratitude to the civic associations, urban planners, builders, advocates, or, you know, builders' associations that added their invaluable insights and make sure that Staten Island's voice is heard. I was 27 years old when I purchased my home, 27. I have two children living at home, regrettably, over the age of 23, that I would love to move out, making over $55,000 a year. Does the City of Yes address the affordability issue so we can produce the next generation of homeownership? But homeowners should not be discriminated against because we've purchased our homes or we live in boroughs that are not Manhattan, not the Bronx, and not Brooklyn. So I want to commend the affordability and homeownership incentives that the Speaker, Adrienne Adams, has done with our leadership in ensuring that the affordable housing modifications were made in this proposal. But as I am two parts an advocate, I am a representative, and this is what my constituents-
Recognizing Councilmember Russler, followed by Marte.
Thank you so much, Madam Majority Leader. You know, mayors and their administrations, they can propose whatever they want, but it is up to this council, the city council, to determine what laws are adopted, what zoning changes are made. This body recognizes the extreme housing emergency and affordability crisis that our city is facing. Thanks to the tremendous leadership of our Speaker, Adrienne Adams, we are embracing a plan to expand housing in every neighborhood across New York City. And thanks to the tremendous leadership of Speaker Adrienne Adams, we are accomplishing so much more. This zoning modification, when adopted by the council, will ensure we create truly affordable housing through the Speaker's City for All Plan. The Speaker negotiated a historic $5 billion investment in new affordable housing that is actually affordable to working families, in tenant protections, in improvements at NICA, in infrastructure investments to meet the needs of growing communities, and so much more. In my district, as a result of this plan, there will be more affordable housing in new buildings that go up and less parking spots in our transit-rich community. That makes sense. This plan will create just about 100 units of new housing per council district per year for the next 15 years. Come to the 33rd District today, there are dozens of projects underway that are bigger than 100 units right now. My district has generated more new housing than any other council district in New York City over the last 15 years. We are doing our part. It has not been easy, but it has been necessary. This plan ensures that every city council district steps up. I'd like to thank the Speaker and her team for negotiating a great deal for New Yorkers, for my constituents. I am grateful, especially to FISA and Jeremy and Mandela for their work on this. I'd also like to thank the team at DCP, who have been great partners to us, Dan and Genevieve, Clem, Oyster, and the whole team over there. This is a really good day for the city council and for the people of New York City. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just a reminder to keep quiet in chambers. Thank you so much. Recognizing Councilmember Marte, followed by De La Rosa.
The real estate industry shouldn't run this city. Working people should. I represent neighborhoods like the Lower East Side and Chinatown where unchecked market-rate development has led to skyscrapers that sit empty, drive up speculation, and causes rents to skyrise, and displaced immigrant communities that had been rooted there for generations. The City of Yes is a yes to only the real estate developers. It's a plan to put our trust in developers, the same ones that evict us, destroy us, and displace our communities. We are now giving them the green light, saying that, yes, their market value matters more than immigrant communities. Yes, people don't need to see the sky when they leave their house. Yes, the real estate board of New York can be better planners than the community who have lived there and built those communities. Yes, we can build market-rate housing to alleviate our affordable crisis, which I don't believe in trickle-down economics. Yes, because an immigrant community only sees that as a profit to make it on the backs of those people who live there. We are saying yes to a plan that the mayor created, a mayor who's embedded with corruption scandals. We are saying yes to what he wants to do to our city. The shadows of this plan will cast over our city, and it isn't just literally. Today, they darken the future of our most-risk neighborhoods. But tomorrow, the fight against displacement will continue. Working people will continue to light their way, to organize against eviction, to unify around community plans like the Chinatown Working Group Plan. Just as there has always been backdoor deals broken in darkness, there will always be neighbors organizing to fight for a brighter future. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you so much. I would like to thank Speaker Adams, my colleagues, Chair Salamanca, Chair Riley, Councilmember Sanchez, and of course, the Land Use Staff and all of the staff for engaging in days of public testimony about housing. The revisions put forth by the council shape a more inclusive plan while accompanying the proposal with financial support to preserve existing affordable housing. Housing is the number-one need in District 10, the community that I represent, with over 90 percent of our constituent cases that come into our office concerning housing in some capacity or another. We are witnessing the stark reality that one in eight public school students are unhoused or lack permanent housing options. We have a choice today, a choice to make a difference. Every day, we work to support families displaced by fires, struggling to find a home in a time of crisis, homeless students lacking safe after-school accommodations, and family cramped into apartments on the verge of losing their own homes. We repeatedly, in District 10, have arrested the worst landlord on the worst landlord list, who has made it impossible for tenants to live in the buildings he owns through sheer neglect. We take this housing crisis seriously. The work doesn't stop today. It merely begins. In District 10, we all remember the inward rezoning. After a traumatic process, there were hard-fought concessions that were put in place to protect parts of Inwood's current zoning. Those protections will remain in place under the City for All proposal. While I have heard the concerns about the depth of affordability, metrics like the universal affordability preferences and area median incomes will not always match our community's financial realities. But we are fighting to stop displacement caused by predatory market forces. This means that the challenges are met by the $5 billion to secure tenant protections, legal support to fight harassment-
Councilmember, your time has expired.
...preservation, and vouchers across the district. No single policy will solve the complex housing issues and the deep systematic barriers that exist. But we must act, and today, I look forward to joining this council in acting so that we can make a reality the City for All. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to recognize Councilmember Holden.
Thank you, Majority Leader. And the City of Yes threatens to change the very character of too many communities in New York City, particularly in Queens. And that's why it was mentioned earlier, that 12 out of the 14 community boards voted against the City of Yes. Now, as a 30-year member of a community board, five in Queens, I know the neighborhoods in and out, because I've done my work as a volunteer. And I also did my work as mapping the entire community in our zoning adjustments in the 1980s and in the early 2000s. I went door-to-door, and many of my, we had 75 volunteers that went around to protect the housing stock, to protect going in our backyards and able to feel the sun on our faces. It's so important that it's not a one-size-fits-all, like was mentioned by my colleagues, Councilmember Banks, Hanks, Marte, and Jaeger. This is something that threatens the very character of our neighborhoods, and it's really egregious that we're turning over many of the decisions to developers. So most of our accomplishments will be totally eliminated. So the City of Yes is a developer's dream and a neighborhood nightmare. This is all this is. And a guarantee of $5 billion is just, again, it's not worth the paper that it's printed on. So it's really like my colleague, Councilman Jaeger, said, monopoly money. Let's not give away our vote because it's really a rush job for developers. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Abreu.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Today's vote isn't about achieving anyone's perfect vision. It's about realizing a shared one. This bill isn't exactly what any of us might have drafted alone, but that's the beauty of democracy: negotiation, compromise, and progress. And progress is exactly what this represents. What we're voting on today isn't just a policy, it's a lifeline. A $5 billion commitment to affordable housing and infrastructure is not just transformative, it's historic. New York City is in the midst of a housing crisis, and the urgency couldn't be clearer. Too many of our neighbors are teetering on the edge, trying to make impossible choices between rent, groceries, and other essentials. This proposal takes a step toward ensuring that every New Yorker can have what we all deserve, the stability and dignity of an affordable home. By passing this plan, we are building a stronger, fairer, and more inclusive city, one that truly meets the needs of its people and prioritizes their well-being. I commend Speaker Adams and her extraordinary team for their vision, leadership, and hard work in delivering this landmark achievement for our city. For these reasons, I urge my colleagues to vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, I now call on Speaker Adams to close the discussion of general orders.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Hearing all of my colleagues and the feedback on this unprecedented legislation that we're voting on today, I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again, this council, and my colleagues have heard me say this many times, this council cannot be the body that says no to people that need a place to live. It is our responsibility, as elected representatives, respecting our districts, as diverse and unique as each one is, to represent our districts as well as the entire city of New York, all of the good, with the bad, and everything in between. We are to represent our entire constituency with the respect and dignity that they all deserve. I don't know about you, but I am tired of the homelessness rate going up. I am tired of my community going south because their city is unaffordable for them to live in. I am tired of watching, daily, people on the brink of eviction and other means of losing their homes, as one of my colleagues said, not have another place to look forward to moving into because it's just not affordable. We cannot do nothing. We cannot do nothing. This proposal, when it was delivered to us, certainly was not perfect. It was not perfect months ago, it is definitely not perfect today, but the modifications put forth by the efforts of this council and members of this city who sat in these chambers for almost 15 hours, under the leadership of Chair Kevin Riley, to give their thoughts, their opinions, their tears, their blood, their sweat, their thoughts, and their opinions to this body, to compile the modifications and help us to deliver. to compile the modifications and help us to deliver the product that we are delivering today. This is not the proposal that was delivered to us, as some of my colleagues have presented, and think that this is the proposal that was presented to us. We have created modifications. This cannot be the council that turns their back on homeless. This cannot be the council that turns their back and continues to say, "Scrap it, let's move ahead, let's do something else," because I tell you, that will never happen. It hasn't happened in 20 years, and it's not gonna happen today if we say no to people that need someplace to live and are looking for this body to deliver it. It is incumbent upon us to do our due diligence to the people of this city, the people that are looking to us to be their leaders. And I know that advancing solutions to these difficult problems certainly isn't easy, but it definitely becomes possible if we unite.
We will have silence in the gallery.
Behind the common good.
Sergeants, please remove him from the gallery. There will be no interruptions from the gallery. Please be quiet as you are moving out and being removed from the floor. Can I please have silence in the chamber? Colleagues, can I please have silence in the chamber?
Colleagues, I will conclude. As we all know and as we see, our job is not an easy one. But we were not elected to stand before our colleagues and our constituents to fail them. There are differing opinions which we must respect. There are constituents which we must respect, and we do. We must unite behind the common good and focus on what is best for every New Yorker and for the futures of the communities that we love. I don't know about you. I want my grandchildren to live in New York City. I want my children that have left New York City to come back to the city that they love. Thank you for your attention, Majority Leader. Thank you for your attention, colleagues.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now have a communication from the clerk.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Speaker Adams, there were two communications from the Office of Management and Budget, M-82 and M-83, budget modifications.
Finance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Report of special committees?
None.
Reports of standing committees?
Report of the Committee on Aging, Intros 1022A and 1054A, aging in place.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Resiliency, and Waterfronts, Intro 814A, sewer backups.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 815A, flood risk map.
amended and coupled on general orders.
677, organization funding.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU 197 and Reso 685 through pre-considered LU 199 and Reso 687, tax exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intro 654A, tax abatement program.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 850A, disposition of city property.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intros 1127A and 1128A, basement legalization and ancillary dwelling unit programs.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections, M-79 and Reso 688, approving the appointment of Muriel Good Trufant Corporation Counsel.
coupled on general orders.
On the general orders calendar, LU 81 and Reso 689, City of Yes zoning for housing opportunity.
Coupled on general orders, I now ask that the clerk take a roll-call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Gutierrez.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Aye.
Thank you. Powers.
Just wanted to send my gratitude to our speaker, and I align myself with many of the comments that you just made right now. I also want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Salamanca, Councilmember Riley, Councilmember Sanchez, for helping lead us through this process, and Councilmember Riley for sitting through days of hearings, and of course, to my predecessor and friend Dan Geronick and his team for all their amazing work here as well. I proudly vote yes and look forward to seeing this in action in the future.
Thank you. Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
First, I'd like to disclose for the record on the transparency resolution that my son works for DSNY. I'd like to speak to the Corp Counsel nominee. In her capacity as acting Corp Counsel and prior as the managing attorney for Corp Counsel, Muriel Good Trufant has held back hundreds of experienced and extremely qualified firefighters, teachers, police officers, and sanitation workers, and thousands of other city workers from returning to their jobs that they love after they won court cases, and she continues to unlawfully have them removed from their jobs. Time and time again, lawsuits against the city have been won by city workers who refuse to take the COVID vaccine due to medical and religious reasons. And time and time again, Trufant, following in the steps of her predecessor, Sylvia Heinz Raddox, has continued to waste taxpayer dollars on appeals instead of giving the workers the court-ordered back pay and allowing them to regain their livelihoods. In her own words, Ms. Trufant stated that at her confirmation hearing that she wants to make certain that should the city have another pandemic like we had with COVID, that we would be able to keep the whole public safe. This means that she would be more than willing to impose lockdowns and mandates which have been dispelled by former Commissioner Ashwin Vasan himself, and it has been proven that it was ineffective and admittedly a political weapon rather than a public safety measure. It's time to end the politicizing of families and their careers. Under Trufant's leadership, this will not happen. For these reasons, I cannot support her confirmation, and I urge my colleagues to do the same. Therefore, I am a no on Land Use Item 181, City of Yes, Intro 1127A and 1128A, M-79, and accompanying Reso 688, and an aye on all the rest. Thank you.
Aviles.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Today, we're voting on City of Yes for housing opportunity, and after significant back-and-forth with the administration, I will be casting a yes vote today. While the mayor, through his initial proposal, failed to create a sufficient plan for affordable housing, I am proud to have worked alongside my colleagues and Speaker Adams to ensure significant capital investments through our City for All package. My vote today is an acknowledgement of the $2 billion committed to maintaining our parks and public infrastructure, an acknowledgement of the $2 billion allocated to affordable housing preservation and development, and of the 187, or, excuse me, for the commitment to expand city FEPs that will create additional housing for our homeless neighbors, and the $200 million commitment to reduce vacancy rates in NYCHA. While this is a major win for the council, I want to acknowledge that this is only a piece of the work we need to continue to engage in to create a more just and livable city for working-class New Yorkers. I will continue to fight on behalf of my constituents to ensure that they and their families can grow and prosper in our communities without fear of displacement. Thank you, Speaker Adams, and with that, I vote aye.
Ayala.
I vote aye.
Banks.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
This has been an extremely tough vote when it comes to LU 181 and Resolution 689. However, my vote today will be a no on the tax resolution. But it's not an objection to housing. It's a call for us as lawmakers and the administration to go back to the drawing board and tackle the issues with a more nuanced, community-based approach. Of course, the city needs more housing, but the housing should reflect the wishes of the communities that are already here, the ones we represent, and not the housing crisis is not to be solved by, should not be solved by, a one-size-fits-all approach. The neighborhoods I represent each have their own unique needs and challenges, and my constituents have made it clear that they do not want to see their communities fundamentally changed without real consideration for their input. I want to emphasize that I appreciate the support and commitments that were given in the City for All, and I applaud my fellow councilmembers, Land Use, Speaker Adams, for their efforts in bringing about investments in critical aspects of the city, such as NYCHA developments, Mitchell Lama, and pathways to homeownership, which to me. However, I still cannot approve the City of Yes tax amendment number three as I believe that the zoning code changes would be detrimental to my district. My constituents feel the same, and I must stand with them. I on all accept Intro LU 181, Resolution 689. Thank you.
Thank you. Botcher.
Congratulations, Speaker Adams, Chair Riley, and Sanchez. Aye on all.
Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Brooks, Powers.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
The City of Yes for housing opportunity has led to meaningful and much-needed conversations around housing disparities in our city. My community members have fought to protect the characteristics of the communities they have come to love and safeguard them from the climate risk and vulnerable infrastructure. Thanks to their advocacy, the final proposal excludes ground floor and basement ADUs in coastal and inland flooding zone, limits the transit-oriented development radius near Long Island Railroad stations, and preserves full parking requirements in nearly all of our district, key safeguards for our community. This proposal will enable more working-class families to access homeownership opportunities and therefore build generational wealth. It will help New Yorkers preserve their homes through homeownership assistance and access more affordable units across our city. Importantly, these negotiations have also secured much-needed commitments for investments in infrastructure and climate resiliency. For a district like the one I represent, which faces chronic flooding and crumbling infrastructure, these commitments will be important for ensuring that any future development is sustainable and equitable. These concessions were important to get me to where I am today. I would like to acknowledge the tireless work of Speaker Adams in her office, especially Jeremy John, Fiza Ali, Perestrada, and the entire Land Use Division throughout this process to craft a plan that better reflects the diverse needs of communities across our city. Today, I will vote yes, recognizing that while no plan is perfect, this amended version represents a step towards addressing our city's housing crisis while prioritizing the needs of our community. Thank you. And if it wasn't clear, I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I want to take the time to give everyone who worked so hard on this their flowers. Thank you, Speaker, the Speaker's team, Council Land Use, Council Finance, Councilmember Sanchez, and everyone else who threw down to fight for City of Yes and the City for All commitments. This is an important step towards ending the housing crisis in all of our backyards. Today's vote is for City of Yes, and New York's housing crisis is dire, and going forward, we're gonna need to do more of that. We need social housing in all of our backyards. Yes, we need some higher-density housing in all of our backyards. We need supportive housing in all of our backyards. Let's keep building, preserving, rehabilitating, and individualizing housing for every New Yorker. Our goal is and should be a home for every New Yorker, no matter who you are, no matter what your needs are, no matter your circumstances. So, today I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Carr.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I just want to take a few minutes to also talk about the appointment of Muriel Good Trufant as the next Corporation Counsel. My colleague, Councilmember Ariela, spoke articulately about the issues concerning the separation of some of our city workers and the failure of them to be returned to office. Unfortunately, she has been one of the main obstacles to their return, and these are good civil servants. But on top of that, she has articulated some other standards that I think are troubling. One of them we heard about earlier today, which is with respect to IESPs for non-public school students. She seems to be one of the architects of the current proposal, which would essentially force parents to give up their children's rights in order to get services come January, services they should have been getting and have been getting for years and should have been getting since the start of the academic year. And she's also articulated a troubling standard with respect to our constitutional rights, claiming that local laws and other acts of legislative bodies should only be struck down as unconstitutional if they can be proven beyond a reasonable doubt that they violate the Constitution. Frankly, I think our constitutional rights should be a lot more accessible than that. And I think that's the standard that the courts in the state have applied, regardless of the parties of the judges who are sitting in hearing our cases. And so, unfortunately, she seems to be part of the effort to continue to appeal the non-citizen voting ruling, which is a plain-text reading of the New York State Constitution that voters in this state must be citizens. And so, I think that those of us who care about our constitutional rights, particularly those that may have been recently added by a recent proposition, should hope for a more accessible standard from somebody who's gonna be serving as our Corporation Counsel. And that's why I cannot support her nomination. And so, with that said, I will be voting no on M-79 with accompanying Resolution 688, LU 181 with accompanying Resolution 689, as well as Introductions 1127A and 1128A, and aye on the rest.
Thank you. Sanchez.
Aye on all.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Aye on all.
Dinowitz.
Aye on all, with the exception of LU 181 and Resolution 689.
Feliz.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Want to congratulate Speaker Adams on this historical legislation. Speaker Adams also chairs Salamanca, Riley, Sanchez, and of course, the Speaker's entire team, including Jeremy, Fiza, and everyone else. I've said it many times, and I'll say it again. We in the Central Bronx, neighborhoods of Fordham Road, East Tremont, Belmont, we're proud of being the neighborhoods that have built some of the largest amount of affordable housing units in the entire city. We're proud of that, but we cannot resolve this housing crisis alone, and we shouldn't be expected to do so either. Every single community needs to help. The housing crisis affecting our city is a serious one, and of course, every district is unique, but everybody needs to help. So, I vote aye.
Thank you. Gennaro.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of LU 181 and Reso 689, on which I vote no.
Hanif.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I vote aye on all. I am proud to vote aye on the City of Yes for Housing Opportunity proposal, which includes significant modifications secured by the council, including an unprecedented $5 billion investment to fund the council's City for All housing plan. This transformative plan will help our city address the housing crisis that is pushing too many New Yorkers to the brink of displacement. The City of Yes for Housing Opportunity zoning changes will help alleviate the affordable housing shortage, while the comprehensive City for All investments will directly address the most immediate issues facing homeowners, renters, and those experiencing homelessness. Together with the implementation of the newly passed Fair Act, these steps will make it easier for New Yorkers to lay down roots in all five boroughs. This milestone also reflects the lessons we learned from the Guanist rezoning in my district. The targeted investments in deep affordability and neighborhood infrastructure, ranging from sewer and street upgrades to flood mitigation and new open spaces, will not only support equitable development, but also lay the foundation for sustainable and resilient growth across communities in our city. I want to thank Speaker Adams, my fellow councilmembers, especially Councilmember Sanchez and Wrestler, whom I was proud to join in helping shape the final proposal, my constituents, and all the advocates who have worked tirelessly to bring us to this moment. I ran for City Council to be a pro-housing legislator, and I'm proud to deliver on that commitment today. Thank you.
Hanks.
I vote aye on all, with
I vote aye on all, with the exception of land use item 181 with the accompanying reso 689.
Eye on all, with the exception of LU 181 and accompanying reso 689, M79 and reso 688, and intros 1127A and 1128A, of which I vote no.
Thank you.
Aye on all.
Joseph.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I cast my vote in favor of moving forward with the City for All housing plan, transformative step in addressing one of the most pressing crises with our city faces: housing. With $5 billion in commitment from the city alongside $1 billion funding from Governor Hochul and the state of New York, we are delivering on an unprecedented investment to ensure New York City becomes more affordable and accessible for all who call it home. This plan is not just about constructing new buildings, it's about constructing a better future for working and middle-class New Yorkers. City for All will produce over 80,000 new homes while deepening affordability, preserving existing housing, bolstering homeownership, and strengthening our neighborhoods' infrastructure. But more than that, City of All is a testament to what we can achieve when we center our people and our policies and prioritize equity and sustainability in our growth. I've heard loud and clear, loud and clear, the voices of those in my community who are concerned about the impact of these zoning changes will have on their neighborhoods. I remain committed to working with you to deliver on the promises: a little more housing everywhere, while defending the character of places where I grew up and where so many of us have invested so much. As someone deeply committed to the well-being of our communities and to our own district, I am especially encouraged by the investment this plan makes to support tenants, protect homeowners, and improve nitrogen development, preserve the character of our neighborhoods, and more. These actions are not only essential to addressing immediate needs, but also laying the groundwork for long-term stability. The housing crisis we face is vast and complex. It demands ongoing attention, innovation, and collaboration. We must continue to push for policies that go beyond zoning reform and address the root causes of inequity in housing. This means doubling down on affordability, protecting tenants from harassment and displacement, and expanding pathways to homeownership. It means ensuring every community has the infrastructure, parks, schools, and transit system needed to grow sustainably. It means recognizing housing as a fundamental right and using every tool at our disposal to deliver on that promise. I thank all who worked on this. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Thank you.
Eye on all.
Thank you. Salamanca.
Eye on all.
Krishnan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I want to commend Speaker Adams for her leadership in bringing City for All and working with our colleagues to bring this to a vote today, as well as commend my colleagues' chairs, Sanchez, Salamanca, and Riley, and the land use staff here for bringing City for All forward. This proposal, City for All as modified by the council, reflects three fundamental principles. One, that the housing crisis we face is the most urgent crisis in the city because it connects to every other crisis around us, and it's important to address it thoughtfully, deliberately, and with the focus on affordability, which this plan does. Two, that in addressing the housing crisis, it's not enough just to create more housing, but to protect people in their homes. That's exactly what the funding for the anti-harassment tenant protection program does. And as a legal services lawyer that worked, as one of the legal services lawyers that worked at the city government to create this program nine years ago, I know personally how important it is to keep tenants in their homes through this program and how it works to fight displacement. And three, that in the efforts to address the housing crisis, we must not create the false conflict between housing and green space. And as the Parks Chair, I see clearly how this City for All proposal does exactly that: building housing, focusing on affordability, but not fostering a false conflict between that and green space. That's why I'll be voting for it. With that, I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
So before I start, I just wanted to recognize the efforts of DCP, Chair Grodnik, his team, as well as our Land Use Division, for all their time and effort and energy into this proposal and for answering our many, many questions along the way. So thank you for that. And every neighborhood, just want to say, every neighborhood faces its unique challenges. I'd like to thank and commend Speaker Adams' efforts to address many of these challenges. While the most recent amendments to the City of Yes have alleviated some of my most dire concerns, there still remains issues that can significantly impact my parts of Queens, Eastern Queens, and other parts of the city. Passing this plan may result in unintended consequences, such as increasing housing density in transit deserts and areas with aging infrastructure. The proposal of ADUs like basement apartments and garage conversions will place further strains on areas that are not fit for additional density. Solving the housing and affordability crisis can only be done through equitable and fair measures that serve the unique needs of all New Yorkers. The decisions we make today in changing zoning will have impacts that will be felt for generations, and we must value the crucial and informative perspectives of the people and communities we have been elected to represent, and my communities have been very loud and clear. This is a complicated endeavor that requires more nuance, time, and thorough planning to incorporate the realities of our diverse neighborhoods throughout the city. So therefore, I am voting no on LU 161, reso 689, intro 1127, and intro 1128, and eye on all the rest.
Lewis.
I want to commend Speaker Adams, Jeremy, and the entire Land Use Division for their tireless efforts around City for All. I vote aye on all, except LU's 181 and accompanying reso 689 and intro 1128.
Mamorato.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of M79 and reso 688, LU 181 with the accompanying reso 689, and intro 1127A and 1128A. Thank you.
Marte.
I vote aye on all, except LU 181 and reso 689.
May I explain my vote?
So ordered.
I want to thank the Speaker and the whole body, Land Use, for all that they have done, but I was thinking of, I have the most community boards in the whole city, and every last one of them has voted no. And before this was even a major, major issue, I did numerous of meetings with my community. My community is a well-informed community. And to think about it, my district is double parking triple times, and to think now developers have absolute power to not do any parking whatsoever. I feel this body is taking our own power away from ourselves. We can't negotiate with the developers, they can do whatever they want. And then to think about, I asked numerous times, what about houses of worship? If you're going to take houses of worship and put it on a back burner, something is wrong with this city, because we should be founded on some kind of faith to make sure that our houses of worship are taken care of first. So with that, I just said I will be voting on all, except 1127A. I vote no. I vote no on 1128A. And to think about it, I asked the land use numerous times, if we're going to change our garages into housing, have we talked to the insurance company to see if those little extra adjectives to our homes can be insured? I still have not gotten that information as of yet. Please consider that. I feel we can do better for this city. And I vote abstain on M79, reso 688, no on LU 181, and reso 689. And I thank everyone who had numerous meetings, but I feel we could do better. And to think about, 12 years ago, I was in office-
Councilmember, your time has expired.
And I put in $3.5 million, and-
Councilmember, your time has expired.
When I came back, they still did not do it.
Your time has expired on the floor. Thank you, Councilmember Mealy.
Councilmember Leif, clarification?
Sorry, I gave the wrong number. LU 181, not 161. Thank you.
Thank you. Menon.
Eye on all.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Narcisse.
I vote aye, except LU 181 and accompanying reso 689. Thanks.
Thank you. Nurse.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I just want to thank my community members who took the time to wrestle with this very, very challenging proposal. I also want to echo the accolades for land use. You guys are the best. Thank you for coming out to my district and making yourself available for town halls. I want to thank the Speaker and her team, Councilmember Sanchez, for your leadership, and everybody who worked to really shape and pull together the City for All plan. And just to say that, I, you know, I recognize this process has been very, very difficult for my community, and I acknowledge that at the heart of a lot of their concerns is deep distrust in our government. They don't feel protected from speculation, they don't feel protected from harassment, they don't feel protected from people who want to steal their properties, they don't feel protected from slum lords. And we really need to do more to protect and defend them, and I believe the investment that was secured starts to address these concerns, and we have a lot more to do. But I, you know, I think it's really a shame to hear some members here today diminish this $5 million investment for our communities as monopoly money, because while some of those members might see homeowner down payment assistance funding, or funding to help, you know, elders keep their apartments and their buildings up to code, or free legal support for tenants and homeowners, you might see that as nothing, but I can guarantee that there are people in your districts who damn well need that support. And I think that kind of characterization is foolish. I do want to thank the base coalition for their advocacy work and really fighting for the ADUs and basement conversions and helping us take meaningful steps to create safe, habitable basement-level apartments. And lastly, I just want to thank my team for helping me navigate this difficult process. I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Osay.
I vote aye on all.
Palladino.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Well, once again, we're here, and it's the tale of two cities. I'm going to tell you something, we did this wrong. I said it from the beginning. This was like a freight train that got rushed through. I appreciate the hard work and the efforts that the land use committees did. I appreciate the negotiations that happened, but they happened way too late. It's as simple as that. The process was a mess from day one, and then in the final days, last week, two weeks ago, we rushed through negotiations and compromises in order to get this passed. I fear that this body is now going to spend years trying to make sense of what we are about to do with carve-outs and fixes and clarifications, all because we didn't take the time, the time, to do this right, or to listen, listen carefully, to what the people are telling us. I come from a district in Northeast Queens, and in Queens, as it was earlier stated, 12 out of 14 rejected this particular City of Yes plan. And it's not because anybody here is a NIMBY or they don't want it. That's not it at all. What it is, is it was not planned properly. For example, infrastructure experts tell us that we can barely sustain housing as it currently exists. Flooding is a major problem in this city. Sewers are overwhelmed as it is, and the electrical grid is at a breaking point, and we continue to strain it even more with the electrification mandates, adding thousands of new households to these systems without first considering local infrastructure going to a result, which is going to result in a disaster. You know, we've been told we're in a housing crisis. This is not the case. What we have here is an affordability crisis that is not limited just to housing, but adding density isn't going to lower the cost of living. It never has.
Councilmember, your time has expired.
Just one more second, please. You cannot give me one example of a large city that has gotten more affordable and has gotten less dense. It just does not exist. And there are other ways, but my time is up, but there are ways that we could have fixed this without rushing it through the way we did. I know a lot of hard work went in, but I have to agree with my district, and I must vote no. Most definitely no. LU 181 with accompanying reso 689, M79 with accompanying reso 688, intros 1127A, no. 1128A, no. Thank you.
Riley.
Yes.
Please, quiet on the floor.
Rivera.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. I just want to thank the Speaker for being a housing champion, for seeing that all of our neighborhoods are indeed distinct. Countless hours have been put in with our fellow public servants working tirelessly, even before our last vote, to get this right, because all council members were heard and all deserving, all are deserving of a plan and opportunity to address our collective housing shortage. And to get here, I'm very thankful to City Planning and the Mayor's Office HBD for their collaboration, but a very, very special thank you to the city council team for their hard work during negotiations. We've worked diligently to get to this moment. I'm proudly voting aye on the City of Yes, and we have and must continue to consider that our vacancy rate is less than 1.5%. Rents are at astronomical levels. Working-class New Yorkers are telling us they are leaving because of high housing costs and the inability to own and keep their home, and we are on track to lose additional seats in Congress after the next census because of outmigration. We are addressing this now as a City of Yes and the unprecedented investments secured by this council. Resonings are challenging, believe me, I know, but I believe it's our responsibility to take a much longer view of what our constituents need to survive and thrive now and for future generations. And with this plan, we are addressing the fact that this city is woefully behind in housing production. With this plan, we will produce more housing than all rezonings under the last two mayoral administrations. This is the largest housing unit creation in recent history, and the council brought it forward. It is time to move forward to support a City for All. With that, I vote aye on all.
Salam.
Yes.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am voting no on LU 181 and accompanying reso 689, City of Yes. Coming from a working-class family, I have been and will continue to be an advocate for affordable housing, and I want to thank the Speaker and the land use staff for the enormous amount of work they did on the modifications to the original plan. I have several reasons for voting no, including the rapid speed in which the proposal was advanced, which from my perspective did not provide enough time for on-the-ground granular interaction with the communities I serve. New York City zoning laws have not been updated since 1961, and while there's great importance to updating the city zoning, the massive implications of any zoning revisions should be heavily weighed and discussed before being finalized. In addition, about 50 years ago, a well-known urban planner, Robert Moses, significantly reshaped the infrastructure and urban landscape of New York City. However, in recent years, it was determined that a lot of the projects implemented by Mr. Moses resulted in fractured neighborhoods, restricted access to open space, and other issues with a negative impact on New Yorkers. Changes made now to the city zoning will be in fact for many years to come, and I want to make sure that 50 years from now, we don't find ourselves in the same position of having to fix unforeseen consequences as we are with regard to- of having to fix unforeseen consequences as we are with regard to what Robert Moses did. While I won't be here in 50 years, my niece and nephew will be, and for them and the many constituents who made their voices loud and clear about the City of Yes, I'm voting no. I on all the rest.
Stevens?
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I would like to first start off by saying thank you to the Speaker and her team, the Land Use team, Chair Riley, for all their hard work and everything that they did to get us to this moment today. But today's decision is a challenging one, as housing inequalities persist across the city. The promise of City of Yes was to create equity for communities citywide. However, this plan still foreshadowed that today. The housing crisis cannot be addressed with a few districts carrying the burden of building all the affordable housing. The West Bronx specifically, District 16, has carried more than its fair share in addressing the city's housing needs. Long before I had the honor of representing District 16, this community consistently stepped up. True equality demands all districts across the city contribute their fair share. However, understanding the complexities of addressing New York City housing crisis, I decided to vote yes. I recognize the halting and advancement of housing development would only deepen this crisis and harm to communities that I fight so hard to serve. However, my vote comes with a commitment that I will continue to fight for genuine equity in housing throughout the city as my time here at City Council. With that, I vote I on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ong?
I vote I on all, except LU 181, Resolution 689, which I vote no. Thank you.
Vernikov?
No on LU 181 with accompanying Reso 689, no on Intros 1127A and 1128A, and no on M79 and accompanying Reso 688. I on the rest. Thank you.
Williams?
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I'll be brief. I just wanted to note that as a result of the modifications, over 70% of my district is exempt from ADUs and TODs, and I just wanted to state that because I think there's a lot of misinformation, and while I truly do value my community, I cannot rest my decisions based off of a lot of misinformation that I even heard here today. And I just wanted to take this time to really thank, again, the Land Use Division. I wanted to call them out by name, Paris, Brian, and Arthur, who has been fielding tons of my questions and concerns for over the last year. I really appreciate it. I really appreciate you helping me to understand what we're voting on today. And so with quite difficulty, because this was not an easy choice, this is not an easy vote, it's a very difficult vote, so with difficulty, I vote I on all. Thank you.
One?
I vote I on all, except I gotta take time to thank Pedina Sanchez, the hardest-working pregnant mom out here, who has been working her butt off to see this through. So I give her a big shout-out, she's almost due, and thank you to Ralph, the Speaker, and everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaeger?
Madam President, may I be excused to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you very much. Well, my time is almost coming to a conclusion here. Hold your applause. You know, the last six years, 11 months, five days, I've had the privilege of sitting in the same seat, and had a chance from time to time to look up at the top, and President Lincoln's words, "A government of the people, for the people, for the people." And, you know, I think about that, we are representative of the communities that we serve, and we're here, and we are of and by the people, but we're also supposed to be for the people, and it's for the people that we represent. And today, as I sit here, the three council members who represent parts of the district that I will be serving when I travel a little bit north, all voted no today. They come from very different and diverse political backgrounds and parties, but they all voted no, along with myself and the four of us, and it's because we know our neighborhoods. And we know that you can't build your communities by building us together with the rest of the city. It just can't be done. I've said this many, many times. We, the idea that we don't build housing because we didn't pass City of Yes is just not truthful. As Madam Speaker indicated earlier, just in the last couple of years, we've passed and built, or approved, 27,000 units of housing here in this council. Thousands of units of housing get built every single year, and at every single meeting of this body, we approve zoning changes. We can approve zoning changes when they're done intelligently, in consultation with our community, where the council member can go and look at the plot of land and say, "That makes sense," or "That doesn't make sense." That's how you build your city. You do it by community, community by community by community, not a bunch of folks come down to Lower Manhattan and decide by fiat how the rest of the city's going to be. I can't vote yes on something that's going to, in my estimation, destroy the city. I do have renewed faith in humanity, though, that so many of my colleagues do believe that $5 billion is actually real. It's phantom because it's not budgeted. It's not allocated. It's not appropriated. That's why it's phantom. So I vote no on LU 181 and Resolution 689, as I am required to do by the people who hired me to be in this body. I vote no on Intro 1127, 1128, and I will abstain on M79, Reso 688. While I do understand that attorneys represent the interests of their clients, and they take guidance from their clients, in that case, in this case, the administration, I can't give the Corporation Council my I-vote in light of my fundamental disagreement with the legal positions that she's taken. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Zhuang?
I on all, except Land Use 181 and Reso 689, and I want to vote abstain on M79, Reso 688.
Borelli?
I on all, except Land Use 181, 689, M79, and the Reso 688, Intro 1127A and 1128A. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Farias?
I vote I on all, and for the public and the press, my statement will be online.
Speaker Adams?
Aye.[1309.65]